Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach's special meeting, yes, scheduled for March 28th, 2023 at 4:00 PM. Please call the roll.
Mr. Frankel?
President.
Ms. Cassell?
Here.
Mr. Bolston?
President.
Ms. Johnson?
President.
Mayor Petolia?
Here. We have three items. The first is going to be the proposed settlement in the case of Michael Coleman. That would be...
It's actually a consent agenda item, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Sorry. You're right. SP1 and SP2 are both consent. So we have two consent items on the agenda. If there's no questions...
Will she approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
I kind of want to make a comment about the two items, if I can.
Sure.
I just want to say that this in no way is a decision made by this board for the purpose of being correct or not correct. This is a business decision we had to make behind closed doors. We were offered, we offered up a settlement that made sense to our attorneys and also our insurers that basically come into play. And so if anybody's wondering, once this is out and about, why we made this decision, when an insurer tells you that you have to settle because they're willing to settle at a certain amount and you choose not to do that, you take on the liability as a city for anything that might be gotten in court of law beyond that point. So it was a decision that was made heavy-hearted, for me, I can say that for myself, but just so people understand why we made it and why there's a, there's a pretty much a unanimous decision because we did have these conversations behind closed doors. So this is the first time we're really in the front of public meeting and talking about it. So I just wanted to make sure I made that comment. Moving on to the regular agenda item, which is the discussion of the public-private partnership proposal for the municipal golf course. And who will take that away? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I would simply at this time like to introduce CBRE Senior Vice President Leanne Kors, who is here to offer a comprehensive presentation based on the events and experiences associated with this particular consideration. So Ms. Kors, I am looking to locate you.
She's online. I'm right here. I hope you can see and hear me.
Can hear you.
She's on our screen.
Oh, okay, yep.
She's at the bottom.
We see you, Leanne.
Okay, excellent. I can't see you, so bear with me on that front. But with that, I think we're ready to go into the presentation. And I first want to thank you for asking us to return and present this afternoon. Is the presentation up?
I think they're getting it up now.
Okay. There it is. Excellent. So we have engaged in a lot of important work since we were last before you at the commission workshop on February 7th, primarily conducting community outreach and collecting community feedback, which I'll talk about in just a little while. However, on this next slide, you'll see a timeline of activities commencing in April of last year and taking us through issuing the RFP, as well as the four public meetings that occurred in February and March this year. Importantly, I think what we've highlighted here is there have been 10 opportunities to hear about the city's activities and participate in public meetings representing a real open and transparent process. So on the next slide, we're going to talk about the development overview. And importantly, we have a team of professionals who evaluated the proposals and contributed to the analysis, including Richard Singer from the National Golf Foundation, who's there today, Matt Kazaya, who's a construction manager and has worked on a number of golf and country club projects, so is a subject matter expertise there and looking at the proposals through a construction lens. And then we have our local real estate experts, Chris Miles and Kirk Sidwell, and they are local to the area, but Chris's family lived in Delray Beach for decades and Kirk and his fiance are current Delray Beach residents. And then finally, Shane Millen is with me on video. He performed the financial analysis of the proposals. And Mike McShay leads our public sector practice nationally. So now I'm going to turn it over to Matt and Richard to refresh our memories regarding the development teams, the golf proposals, and then I'll come back and give you a recap of the community feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. As Leanne said, my name is Matthew Kazaya. I'm the Director of Project Management for CBRE here in Palm Beach County. We'll be rotating through about 12 slides here today and going back and forth with Richard, myself, Leanne, and Shane, our financial analyst. So just to refresh everyone's memory, here you can see on this slide, to the left are four developers that remain. Originally, in November, we had six. It's since been narrowed down to the four you see here today. And then along the top on the header there, you see the core project team that each of the developers proposed for the P3 development. Going down the left from top to bottom in alphabetical order, first we have Bobby Jones, Lynx, Mill Creek out of Boca Raton. They are only local Palm Beach County developer in Mill Creek, to Palm Beach County, I should say. CGH Capital Group, Hensel Phelps Developments, they are a joint venture partnership with Capital Group being local to South Florida as well. Heatherwood Luxury Rentals, they are New York-based with some experience in P3 golf course developments. And then, of course, the Related Group based out of Miami-Dade County as well. So each of these teams, what I should say first off and foremost is are all qualified to deliver on this project. The two that we narrowed down previously, they were qualified as well. Their vision just wasn't quite in line with the spirit of the original RFP. The big one for the project here is the golf architect. I'm not going to take too much of Richard Singer's thunder there, but each of the developments will have about two to three principal architects, first and foremost being the golf course architect. Then there will be a clubhouse architect associated with whatever work takes place at the clubhouse. And then for the private component, some of them have chose to bring in independent or a third architect to help with that design. In general, they all have a, or not in general, they all do have a private multifamily component, and many of these architects specialize in multifamily developments. So we're not going to go through and read every firm here. I should say that there are, many of these firms are local. Some of them, architects are based here in Delray Beach and Palm Beach County, along with their construction managers that they propose. So like I said, all are capable to deliver on the spirit of the project and what they proposed. And I'll hand it over to Richard now to talk about the golf development.
Thank you, Matt. Richard Singer with National Golf Foundation, and good to see you all again. I've been the off-and-on city golf consultant for many, many years and have had a lot of experience in looking at the Delray Beach Golf Club. You can move it to the next slide? Are we moving? Oh, I haven't. Sorry. The golf course proposals that have been put forth in the four remaining teams show a nice mix and a variety of options for the city to consider in terms of your golf, in terms of your golf course. It's a mix of designers, including several national names and well-established names in golf, including Reese Jones and the Nicholas Group and Eric Larson with Beth Daniel, a local golf personality. And the last one was Tyler Ray with Heatherwood. And they are all proposing basically to retain the general spirit of the golf course that exists there today. There will be some subtle changes, some modernization that they're all proposing. They are all proposing to retain at least seven of the Donald Ross, historic Donald Ross holes that exist there. Most of them are proposing to retain all nine of the historic Donald Ross holes and make only subtle changes to the other nine holes that ultimately will retain the basic character of the type of parkland golf course that exists there today, but with some subtle changes that will support a more modern game of golf, as well as support some of the pullout, the seven or so acre pullout that they're looking to do in order to help, as the financing mechanism for these renovations. Two of the proposers are proposing new clubhouses. Two are proposing to renovate the existing clubhouse. All of them are proposing to include some type of high-tech driving range and practice facility with modern technologies. All of them are promoting a wide variety of fees with a wide range of discounts specifically focused towards City of Delray Beach residents. And they're all proposing a various level of programming and leagues and events and all of that that will provide the basic golf community outreach that I think is appropriate for a municipal golf course like this. So we're here to answer whatever questions that you have about that, but I think that you've seen the presentations from the various proposers and you have an idea of what the subtle differences are, but ultimately, they're all proposing to bring you an upgraded, modern 18-hole championship golf course. And I think that that was one of the key things that you had indicated in your RFP from the very beginning. I don't know who's up next.
I'm back again. Okay, so this next slide really talks about the private development, the, one of the Ps in the P3, in exchange for some parcel of land. Each of these developers is proposing building a private development on the site. To the right, what I'd really like to have everyone focus on here, on the right column, of the 148 acres that consist of the Delray Beach Golf Club, at the smallest, with Related, they're proposing seven acres of that 140 acres to go for their private development. And then the other three are within 10 acres or at 10 acres. So a very small percentage of the golf course and all of, and I should point out, all of those developments would be fronting Atlantic Avenue. Those developments are taking about 10 acres of the total 148 acres. So going back to the top-left corner, I'll just run down the big elephant in the room, the development that each of these is proposing, starting with Mill Creek. So the first is 650 units. They have the highest density of private development on the site. I should point out that that's a phased development, so it's not 650 units all being brought on at one time. The first phase consists of 375 units, and then the balance coming in a second phase. And those develop, and that private, or the apartment complex project would be a five-story development in a wrap configuration. So what that means, it's a, all the units wrap a central parking garage, so the parking garage that, you know, with 650 units, you do need a good number of parking spots. That garage would be hidden from sight in that development. Moving down the list with Capital Group, Hensel Phelps, they're proposing 312 units along with 128 key hotel. The hotel will be five stories. The 312 units for the apartment building will be, consists of three buildings, five stories each. For Heatherwood, it's a much more spread-out development. They're three-story garden-style apartments with about, I'd say about 25 or so buildings dotted along Atlantic Avenue and then coming down on a central corridor on the front third of the golf course. And then finally, Related has, is proposing 444 units, again, in a five-story wrap configuration, so they would be shielded from Atlantic Avenue. And they are also proposing, on their seven acres, 24 villas as well. All would be for rent, no condos, it would all be rental apartments. And then each of them will propose, will have some component of mixed use, or I'm sorry, affordable housing. And you can see that break down there in that column showing their affordable housing component. Again, the only developer proposing any sort of hotel of the remaining four is CGHP and Hensel Phelps, 128 keys, and they're proposing a Spring Hill Suites product at the moment. And then each has a little bit of, some have a retail component, so Mill Creek, you can see, has 8,000 square feet of retail along Atlantic Avenue, 1,400 feet for CGHP. And then Heatherwood has an entertainment facility and restaurant located within their clubhouse. So with that, Leanne, I'll turn it back over to you to talk about the...
Matthew, before you move on, I remember, because I just written it down, that the Hensel Phillips Group was a four-story, not a five-story. You said five-story. The reason I remember hearing that is because at the last meeting, they said, "Well, if you'll allow us to do five stories, we'll do five stories." I remember that specifically.
Yeah, I might need to go back and clarify that, Madam.
Okay, because I think it's four.
I apologize.
Anyway, just, I'm sure somebody's here that can correct me if I'm wrong or whatever.
Right, I'll go back and check my notes. I just don't have it committed to memory. And then, thank you for pausing me. I just wanted to mention one last important detail here. Three of these four are proposing a fee simple exchange for the private land. CGHP, Hensel Phelps is not proposing any fee simple exchange of the land, it would be a lease as well.
Right.
Thank you. Leanne?
Yeah, thank you, Matt. So on Slide 6, we are just listing out the statistics related on attendance for the community outreach sessions. The bottom line is we had a total of 265 individuals attend the four outreach meetings in February and March. And commission direction and request enforced this inconvenience, the meetings were held in various places around the city, as well as different times of the day, including evenings and a Saturday morning. So with that, Slide 7, we start to get into the summary of input. And CBRE has probably 25 P3s going on at any given time nationally, and I think the city has balanced both the sharing and the listening, both of which are extremely important, so that on the sharing side, residents are aware of what's going on. And once they know what's going on, they have an opportunity to then provide feedback. At the February meeting, a full presentation was provided, followed by community feedback. The other three meetings were really tailored more toward receiving community feedback, given that the two presentations were already provided by CBRE, as well as the developer presentations on March 2nd. However, hard copies of all four presentations were provided at those meetings, as well as on the city's website. So this is, you know, not intended to be a list of every single comment that was made, but we tried to summarize the topics that really came up repeatedly. First and foremost, traffic, that was the most frequently expressed concern, I believe. And then giving up green space. Several residents were opposed to any green space giving up, being given up, even though a large portion of the golf course obviously remains. There was concern about a hotel being across from the high school. And financing without private development offsetting the cost really came up repeatedly, and it was oftentimes referred to the quote "fifth option" in addition to the four proposals before you. And finally, the safety of a walking or biking trail. So I think importantly, if this commission wants to move forward with any of the four proposals, many of the concerns could be considered during the negotiation process. For example, conducting an independent traffic study to determine how to mitigate impact, just as one example. Slide 8 really represents the online survey results regarding the most important aspects of the project. Number one being, you know, the maintaining of the 18-hole championship course. And you all have already heard that feedback and eliminated two proposals to ensure that number one was accomplished. And again, I think improvement to all of the other elements can be negotiated throughout the process, should you decide to move forward. Next page is just a summary of some of the community benefits. I think Richard talked a little bit about some of them previously, but they range from junior programs to clubhouse improvements, new or renovated, that can be used for various functions, new practice areas and driving ranges, resident rates and tee time preferences, as well as workforce housing, which is a chronic need, not only in your community, but in many communities. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shane to talk about the financial analysis. And then Matt's going to talk about the schedule, and we'll wrap up.
Yes, Leanne. Hello, everyone. Looking at this from a financial lens, we really have four great proposals for the city to consider. Each proposal gave really good detailed information about what they wanted to do with the land for both public and private improvements and what the financial benefits of the city would be. This page here serves as a comparison tool for review of each proposal and presents the scope and financial details from each proposer. I'm going to skip over to the top of the page, which just lays out the physical details from each proposal. Matt discussed this earlier during this presentation, but that goes over who is presenting what, multifamily, retail, restaurant, et cetera. I'll move on to the capital budget on the middle section, which really includes two main components, the public improvements or the golf improvements, and that's really the cost to improve the golf course and any other public components that the city needed in the RFP. The second-line item is the private improvements, which are what's funding their own multifamily restaurant, et cetera, private components that they want. This range is from $167 million in total to $320 million in total. The bottom of this slide here really focuses on the benefits to the city, and this is broken down into a few different components. First is golf course operation revenue. Second is property tax revenue. And then the third component is the master lease payments and master lease gross ground rent revenue that I can go into detail in a second. But one thing I want to point out is that for the golf course revenue and the property tax revenue, these were all detailed out in each proposal with a wide range of outcomes for the city. For example, golf course revenue ranges from $188,000 a year to $1 million a year, and that really just depends on how the proposer laid out their management agreement with the city. For the ground rent revenue and the annual lease payments, master lease payments, this is due to the CGHP proposal that Matt discussed earlier, where the city would be paying off master lease payments for the public and private components of this, for the public components of the city. And in turn, the city would be receiving revenue from these private components for a net zero cost to the city. Finally, at the bottom of the section, it highlights the NPV benefit to the city for 99 years at a 5% discount rate. And as you can see, this range is from a benefit of $69 million to $82 million for the city. Matt?
Thank you, Shane. So just one final point on the schedule. In the RFP process, we asked all the respondents to provide a timeline and a milestone schedule for their proposed development. First and foremost, and I think the biggest takeaway for this slide for the city residents and the commission here, is that golf would be a priority amongst all four of the developers. So naturally, with any large development or any development, there's going to be a planning and zoning permitting process and a building permitting process that we all know can take a number of months and some time. But in every case, the developers will be prioritizing golf, and our recommendation of you would be that we ink that and, you know, should we move forward with any of these respondents, that that be rolled into the negotiations and at least that the golf course be brought online sooner and first, along with the clubhouse. So with each of these, you can see the proposed durations that they came back to. Don't pay too much attention to the months and the dates that are contained in this. Really, it's from the date that we kind of agreed to move forward. That would be the number of months that it would take to bring these, each of these components online. So for the golf course, generally, it's, you know, a 10- to 14-month process. Related didn't have theirs carried in a phased approach, but like I said, as part of the negotiation, we would recommend that golf be brought online sooner. I think that number represents their clubhouse, which would be along the Atlantic Avenue corridor because they are proposing a larger, new clubhouse. Their clubhouse was 25,000 feet. So there, you can kind of see the total duration for, you know, speaking to Mill Creek and Bobby Jones, you can see that their total duration is 68 months. The reason for that is they have the largest project, right? And they have a phased project, whereas the others are more condensed and in some cases smaller. So their schedule was pushed out a little longer. But just for comparison purposes, we wanted to show you the proposed schedule for each of them. Leanne?
Thanks. So here on Slide 12, we show you how the proposer plans to finance the project with sources and percentages of debt and equity and letters of commitment as well, where references weren't provided, case studies were, which demonstrated their experience. So moving on then to the next slide and wrapping things up, as we said at the start, the good news is that if you decide to move forward with the P3, the city has quality teams to choose from, and it's a community asset, so we thought it was important to list out some of the things that were, we heard were important to golfers and potentially non-golfers that can still enjoy the assets associated with the redevelopment. So with that, our presentation is concluded, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you so much, Leanne. You know, I wanted to take just a minute or two to kind of set the stage because I went to one of the meetings and I've received a lot of feedback back, so I wanted to go over some things just to make sure that the audience knows and is aware of the observations that I have and maybe some of my colleagues as well. So in one of the, in the meeting over at Pompe Park, it was a question of the option five. The option five being none of the options, one, two, three, or four. That's 100% on the table, always has been. You know, this is a choice that we're making moving forward, and if none of these really suits the commission, we don't have to choose one. So just understand that, because I know there was a lot of questions with respect to whether or not there was the ability to be able to say no to all of the proposals. The other couple of things that I wanted to make sure that people understood is that this course did not get into its condition in the last decade. How do I know this? I was elected 10 years ago. And upon my election, I already had people coming to me saying, "Our course is in horrible form and bad repair." We started trying to work on this from that point forward, and unfortunately, we didn't get anywhere. We did have some money at one point in time in order to be able to repair the course. At that point... At that point, that point, I think it was 3 million and some odd, and some change. And by the way, you could probably speak to this even earlier than me because, um, the vice mayor, uh, was, was a member of this commission before I was a member of this commission. So I'm sure he probably could, could add to that and say that it's been 13 years that we've been having, uh, to do something with this course. But, so to say that it was in pristine condition and it just fell down over the last decade is incorrect because we've been trying to do something with it. And like I said, we had over $3 million set aside to fix the course. At that point in time, we had a different city manager and the city manager said, we can't do it because we have infrastructure that has to be done. And the infrastructure was now an issue that the $3 million wasn't going to touch it. So where were we going to get that? And why didn't we have that information when we were actually moving forward with trying to put this in our CIP projects of things to be done? With that, we started to talk about how are we going to get this kind of money at that point in time? It was, I think, $10 million for the infrastructure and we still had the course to be able to do and the clubhouse. And then we had things that happened in our city, as happens in every city, where one CIP project becomes more important than another CIP project. And unfortunately this one was leapfrogged and we didn't even have the money for that major, uh, infrastructure, a job to be done. And we went into, you know, COVID and everything else. And here we are 10 years later, doing nothing with the course. So that's really kind of where we are today. And one of the things that in the last two meetings, the last two goal-setting meetings that we've had, is to try to figure out, how do we do this and deliver? And not get caught up again where we have money set aside, but something more important comes along and shoves the golf course out of the way. And, and, and three, to make sure that it gets done. That's really what we were facing. So this commission came to the conclusion that we would look to a P3 projects potentially and bring it before the city. And that's really where we are today, because we couldn't bring to the commission, to the, to the people, anything that an outside, uh, uh, party would consider doing if we didn't know what they were willing to do. That's not possible for us. So we had to do it in this fashion to be able to let everybody know what is available and realistically available, not just what we're going to say we could possibly get. So that brings us to today. And this is not an easy decision for any of us, because I know there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of, um, emotion with our, with our golf course. And I, I feel it too. I mean, I, I come from that feeling of never wanting to give away, you know, green space, don't want to give away land, uh, you know, that we don't need to. But the question that I have for everybody who has been attending is if we don't do this, are we okay with another several years, maybe even five, of doing nothing? Because in government, we don't have the same ability to be able to make things move forward as they can in private sector. We have to go through surveying, we have to go through consultants, we have to make sure that everything's okay. And, you know, all these different, uh, you know, uh, I don't even know what you would call them, but anyway, we have to go through the, the, exactly. And it, and it takes time. In addition, we have to make sure that the money's there before we start going forward. So this was an opportunity for us to be able to possibly bring something quicker within several years or a couple of years that the city would not be able to do and to make sure that it gets done. So the trade-off is, is what these companies are willing to put forward worth it or not? That's the question that's facing us and what we've been listening to most of the audience and we've been hearing from the letters that we've been receiving. So we're reading them, we know what you're feeling. And, um, and that brings me to where we are. So let me start with my commission to express, I just wanted to make sure I laid that out because I know that there's been a lot of misinformation out there. Oh, and by the way, at one of the meetings, I was even thinking that it was only a 1.5 million dollar infrastructure, because I heard that number, um, need. And I thought to myself, as I was sitting in the audience, why would we even do a P3 if we only had 1.5 million dollars worth of infrastructure that was needed? That was only for one little tiny part of what needs to be done underneath. So basically it is a probably 12 to 15 million dollar infrastructure investment in that property in order to be able to do what, in order to be able to move forward. And the only reason why we're not putting that on the, the, well, one of the reasons that it was never put on the utilities is because utilities, um, it isn't, it isn't needed right now to have to change that. But if we do the, the work above, we have to do the work below. So that's the reason why it's together with this whole deal of moving forward with the golf course. That's my, the best way to explain it so that everybody understands. Opening it up to my commission. Anybody want to start?
Well, uh, I'll start, uh, first by saying thank you. You know, thank you for taking the time to lay, um, all of that out, because I think it's just, uh, it's really important information of how we got here today. Um, especially because many of us are trying to take care of so many, so many, um, items across our city that need to be built or rebuilt or added to our city. Um, as many of you know, new water treatment facility, which we did a revenue bond for. Thank you. New police station, fire department upgrades and park improvements will be funded with the geo bond. New community center will be funded through the CRA at Pompe Park. The golf course upgrade, we thought a public-private partnership would be a great way, a great way to fund that. And I've heard from voters over the years that we don't do enough of those, because we don't really do any of those. Meanwhile, our sister cities, especially one right next door in Boynton Beach, has, has leveraged that, has leveraged the market. So we thought we could do that. Meaning we're using all the tools in our toolbox to fund all of these projects and get these done, get all of these things done. And if we were to, able to use all those tools, then we can address some of the other infrastructure needs, such as city hall and some other buildings. We could probably do that through staggered funding model across a few years in our budget. That we can make work. I think it's really just important, what we were trying to do, what we were working for. And whether you agree with certain aspects or not, it was a heavy lift and it took a very diverse, uh, funding model in order to maybe address all those things in a matter of years, which would be pretty amazing. Now, what I will say, that was a lot for the community to swallow, right? It was a lot for us to have to educate you on all at once, asking you to, during an election, where you're already making very important decisions, right? On, on who your, who your community leaders will be moving forward. Already an incredible amount of information coming at you from every angle, especially your mailbox. But during that time, we were also asking you to make a very important decision about a geo bond. Um, uh, two geo bonds, actually. A hundred million dollar geo bond and 20 million dollar geo bond. And all at the same time, we were asking you to understand this, uh, public-private partnership regards to our golf course. That was a lot to ask of you. Two of those things, we have no control over the deadline. It was election day. This one, we have a little bit more control. Now, I know we are trying to get this done, um, because we do have, you know, two colleagues that will not, you know, be up here with us and we want to see some finality to this topic that we've been working on for the last two years. And I especially have to apologize, um, to Ms. Johnson, because you're, you're, you're terming out and I know that was really, really important to you. And, you know, I promise that your input, um, as we move forward will, will be very important to me and hopefully will answer all my phone calls and text messages in regards to this subject. I'm not comfortable in making a decision today. Um, I think there's a lot more discussion to be had. I don't think I can go into negotiating with any of these, um, proposer, proposers, because I don't exactly know yet what the community wants. Can we get close? Are one of these able to negotiate and get close? Or is this not, not the right direction? But I think it's really important, what the mayor pointed out, option five that I've heard of, option five is not that we fund it. That is not an option. We don't have the 20 to 25 million dollars. Um, option five is kind of status quo, most likely. You know, we'll look for a better, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll look to make improvements in the management, we'll look to make improvements in the funding of the course, uh, we'll certainly look for those improvements. But there is not option five where we write a 20 million dollar check and make, you know, all of these enhancements. That's not an option. It's kind of status quo for now, because we have a lot of other priorities that include safety and parks and water, and those take priority. So I think that's really important to know. So that's, and I think it's important for my colleagues to know. Um, that's kind of where I stand today. I'm happy to be part of any discussions if we choose, uh, to have those discussions, but I, I'd feel more comfortable making this decision with more community input and a little more time.
Fisher Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner, uh, Boilston. I, um, for those of you who've known me over the past six years, I'd like to thank you for your support. Thank you for having a discussion, whether we tended to agree or disagree. And I hope that you know that everything you've ever said to me, I've taken it into account. And sometimes I've had to make a decision that you totally disagreed with. And I hope we can still remain friends and as the commissioner said, I'm open, whether you, um, like how this ends tonight or not, I'm always available. If you have my phone number, fine. If you don't, um, call the city hall, they'll give it to you. I'm always open to discussion as to why, what, why I decided what I did in the past and what I will be doing in the future. That said, I am not one who believes in working hard and not coming to a finality. I heard everything that everyone said. I think all of you recognize that I was there at each of the meetings. I heard each of your comments. I tried to write them down as quickly as I could, so that when I got home, I could kind of organize them and say, okay, 10 people were just, were concerned about the traffic. 10 people were concerned about the largesse of the project. But what I did not hear is that anyone disagreed with the fact that we're going to have a quality 18-hole golf course with whichever, uh, project we do decide. And as I said, I'm not one for, my favorite term is kicking the can down the road. I think for maybe 20 years, we have neglected this gem of a property. And we've also neglected our infrastructure. We've neglected our water treatment plant. We have neglected some of our roads and streets. Why? Because it's a tough, heavy lift to spend taxpayer money. And the mayor has consistently tried to lower the rates, lower the rates. When you lower the rates, hopefully the property values will go up. So you don't necessarily lose, but you also don't maybe have that extra surplus. I don't fight that planned thought. She's been successful at it and the community loves her for it. I also appreciate, Mayor, your laying out the scenarios of what we have done and what we've tried to do. I am not in favor of kicking the can down the road. And I don't know if that means we're going to have to have a discussion about it, a vote on it, whatever. But, um, I am ready to move forward. And if we don't, our poor, dying golf course that's on its last lifeline may not even be there when you're finally ready to decide, yes, we need to do something. Now, as, uh, our city manager has said repeatedly, this is not the end of it. Should we choose someone tonight? There's going to be a period of negotiations. And if something's too large, the footprint is too big, you want to try to get that particular person that you chose or, or, um, developer that you chose to put in a little more money, because I am of the impression that the water wells were not even a part of the consideration. Why that happened, I do not know. I was not a part of creating the proposal, was not in any of the discussions other than what was brought forward here. So frankly, I didn't quite understand how valuable the understructure of it is until I attended one of the meetings and found out that as the mayor said, if you touch anything above, you're going to have to do something underneath. Now, to the credit of the developers, if they weren't told that, then how can they bring us back a package that discusses it? So I'm hoping that all of the four that we are discussing tonight, and it's not something we could have gone back to them and said, we need you to give us some numbers or get with our, um, our water, um, manager, Mr. Haji Mary, I'm sure I butchered his title. Um, so it's something that's in the works. But if we continue to kick that can down the road, let me tell you, it takes forever to get anything done in this city. Trust me, it'll be another 10 years. Our golf course will be nothing but rubble, as it is now, in my opinion. I took a ride around and I was just frankly dismayed. This is our golf course? This is our gym? I saw no green grass. Maybe it was the time of the year that I was there, but I saw a lot of dirt. I saw a lot of fallen trees. I saw a lot of things in the neighborhoods that were frankly, something I would not be proud to show you. If I could have had a camera and showed you what I saw, you would be up here saying, if you don't do something today, shame on you. So with that said, I'm ready to continue the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Sure. Thank you. Um, Mayor, with your opening comments, you kind of jogged something in my memory. And that was from a, uh, former president of the women's league, Mitzi Kitz.
Oh, yeah.
She would come in here and chastise us quite a bit about how, uh, we need to take care of the golf course. So I, I went in my email, and I have an email from 2018 about how we need to make improvements and whatnot. And of course, COVID hit and we didn't get to it, as you stated. But this has been a discussion that hasn't been occurring for the last six months. This is something that has gone years in the making. I know there's some, some representatives from CBRE, you guys did a great job. You guys brought an amazing group of, of candidates with some of the best golf architects in the world. We're lucky to have any four of these. Uh, so I also want to thank Sarah Maxfield. She sent over a, a very helpful poll that was taken. And 340 people did take part in this poll. And of the 340, 339 of them played golf there. And they said that their priorities are an 18-hole championship golf course, the clubhouse size and amenities, practice area design and greens fees. And I think we have four great proposals that address that. The fact is, as Ms. Johnson stated, we can't keep continuing this. Can't be. And, and I, I appreciate some of those that have emailed and have contacted me that stated that we're, we're rushing this, we're in a, uh, putting this in a hurry. That's not the case. This has been discussed multiple times. And I think it's very important that a partner is brought on to not put this burden solely on the taxpayers, as we do have 120 million in bonds that we were voted on and approved. So to me, I'm ready to go forward. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think the reality of the situation as we sit here today is if we do nothing, nothing is going to happen and for a very long time. So the question is, what can we do that accommodates the needs of the city and the residents? One of these applicants is looking for a 30-year lease, which means we give nothing away. Nothing. We don't give the property away, we retain it. That was one of the biggest concerns I heard, was don't give away our green space. And I share that concern, because I don't think, we don't have enough property, we need to retain every inch of it. The other, um, you know, the other concern is traffic, and I share that concern and, and, and a desire for, uh, less residential units. And I think the, um, applicant who is looking for the land use, uh, lease has the lowest number of units of all the applicants. And I'll add to that additionally, they are putting the most money into the underground work. So there are options. Do nothing and nothing happens. We see the budget, we know. I mean, we're pulling a $160,000 boat off the budget because we can't afford it. And I see the budget, I've studied the budget, we all have. So if we do nothing, you're going to be dealing with the golf course as it is. And if we move forward, we'll be looking at a new golf course and that's the decision to be made here today.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions just for, um, uh, maybe it was Matthew, I'm not sure. Let me just see here what my questions are. I don't know why. Okay, so one of the other things that I know we talked about was, um, the, the acreage. And when we're talking about putting in these different, um, developments, is there a net acreage? Because it, it appears to me that what we're only looking at when we have this public acreage is just the amount along that Atlantic Avenue piece, not taking into consideration what will be returned back to the golf course. will be returned back to the golf course where the current clubhouse is. On, on two of these anyway, where, where they're actually going to be building new clubhouses. So my question to you is that, is there a net acreage that you could be showing us out of the 148 acres, giving back the area where the clubhouse is currently, and then taking it from the, what is the net loss in green space? That's important to a lot of people.
Correct, correct, yeah. Along Atlantic Avenue, you know, the, the numbers we're showing on our slide, those would be the, the gross, the ask from the developers. But the existing clubhouse does mean something, right? And I don't have those numbers offhand, but I want to say it's roughly two acres somewhere in there for the existing clubhouse and the parking lot. So if you factor that in, you know, related seven acres looks to be five, and, you know.
So it's about two that we would be losing in that one area?
I believe so, yeah.
Because you also have the driving range and areas around there. Just curious, because it feels like it's more, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, well, the driving range is still part of the golf course.
Yeah, that's still green space.
Yeah. Right. The AM tower, I think both of them said they would move. It has one acre of unusable space around it.
Okay.
And Mayor, on page, I don't, page five, they do have some sort of a breakdown.
Yeah, no, I was looking at that, but that's, that's the total that they would be taking, not the acreage.
Well, this is private, and then, private is, is what we would be giving the, the developer, if that's how we want to see it.
Yeah.
In exchange, and the public would be the golf course, I imagine.
Okay. You guys are moving, shifting?
They like our new layout.
We're using the new format. All right, yeah, musical chairs. I didn't hear the music, I didn't hear it stop there, so, okay. And then, traffic. Traffic is a really important issue. I live over in that area. I understand what everybody's talking about as far as the traffic, especially the backup on, you know, Congress Avenue and, and Atlantic, which obviously, that's the very, very close intersection. How will we determine whether or not, and how will we determine on any of these, how it's going to affect our traffic? We have not done a traffic study, I presume, on any of these yet, correct?
So the city hasn't commissioned its own independent traffic study. I know we, that came up in the, in the public, the public meetings. One of the developers, ironically enough, it's the largest development, Mill Creek, did commission their own traffic study. So, you know, realize that it is from a developer, it's still preliminary, it hasn't been validated or approved in any, in any way. But at the end of the day, any development that comes forth would need to meet the requirements of the Palm Beach County traffic standards, performance standards. Just reading you the facts from what this report says, for the Mill Creek development only, their engineer's estimate was 248 net AM/PM trips, and then 274 net afternoon trips. I'm sorry, 248 net AM peak trips, and then 274 in the afternoon.
And what was their density? Well, I can't remember just offhand, do you know?
650 units.
So they were the most dense?
Yes.
And that's what we would be looking at?
Correct.
Yep, yep. Okay, and then I just wanted to also mention, and this has nothing to do with any of the current bidders, but I did a little bit of research, because I want the audience and the people in the city of Delray Beach to know, and I'm not blaming anybody, so please don't, you know, write up that I'm throwing somebody under the bus. I just wanted to kind of understand, what does it take to run a really good golf course? How much does it cost? We have a $2.9 million outlay at that golf course on an annual basis, and we are just skimming by. We don't have any money going in to be able to save up for vehicles that break down, or any kind of major renovations, or bathrooms that need to be renovated. Those are the things that are outside of that $2.9 million. And correct me if I'm wrong, is that a correct figure?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so, so we're just skating by. Happened to be involved, or ha- happened to own a home in a, in a country club on the West Coast. So I asked, it looks like, I'm just telling you, like Pebble Beach, okay, in comparison. It's unbelievable, it's super manicured. And so I was thinking, how much does it cost you guys to handle the, you know, to, on a, a per-hole basis? What is it, what is your maintenance? $100,000 a hole. It's about half of what we're paying. And this thing, this, this course is unbelievable. It's unbelievable in comparison. So I kind of have to ask myself, which is something that a lot of, a lot of the audience members asked, where's the money going? Where is the money going? Because it certainly isn't going into that course. And it doesn't look like the one that I'm, I go over to and play, and it's like pristine, and that's what we should have. That's the way I feel. We should have that course here. So, anyway, just wanted to give you an idea as to some of the differences. And again, it could be, there's been, people have talked to me about our course being so not able to come back because the top of the course is gone. So you can't just throw the chemicals in, or the, you know, fertilizers, and, and get the green grass and be able to, you can't do that. The whole thing needs to be scraped in order to be able to bring in new nutrients and, and that type of thing to grow the grass. That's my understanding, whether it's true, it's just what I received as far as the reason why. But still, we're putting a tremendous amount of money into that golf course on an annual basis. And what have we got back but just a lot of complaints and people that are very unhappy with the course? But I also feel like we're being asked to stop and push, push us back to not go forward. So I don't know. I mean, it would have been great to have had on that survey, do you want to go forward or you don't? Because that would be an easier question, easier way of me to be able to make a decision here. Now, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, and it, it may or may not be appropriate at this point, but I'll say it. I have had a, a looksee over most of these, these proposals. And there's one that stands out for me, and it is the one with the, with the, with the Marriott. And let me tell you the reason why. It is the lowest density of all of them, even though it has the Marriott. I don't really take that into consideration as morning and afternoon, leaving and coming. The Marriott 128 Keys is a continual all-day, back and forth. Go to any of the other hotels in the city, and you will not find just like, in the morning, a stack of, of traffic, and in the evening, like you do when you're going into a, a residential community or coming home on one of the larger streets. So to me, that actually mixes well with the 100%. And this is where it, this is where I could see taking, doing something that would be a little bit different than, than what I would normally do, but, or say, which is to say that we'll give up some green space for having 100% of the 308, or 312 units as being workforce housing. And my thoughts were that if you have, and this is not the high-end workforce housing, this is the, this is the stuff we were looking for. This is where actually people who are working at the golf course, working at the, at the hotel there, they'll actually be able to afford to live there. And so my thoughts are that it kind of works together in that you have units where people can afford to live and also work right there for the, I don't know, they said there was going to be 1,000 or some odd jobs created, I think it was, I'm not sure. I was reading on here somewhere, it was a, it was a very high number of, of jobs being created in that particular one. There you go, okay. Thank you. So anyway, so, listen, I'm not 100% on board with anything, I just wanted to throw that out to my colleagues to let you know, and this was also the number one from the city, I guess, one of the ones that basically came up as, as being the, the one that they had thought was best for us. So, anything else? Does anybody want, want to?
Yes, I had thought we were discussing whether we were going to go forward or not. I did not discuss, um, choices.
Well, I think if we're going to go forward, then you have to have a choice.
Well, not necessarily. We discussed whether we're going to go forward or not. We decided, I think, four of us said we're going to go forward. Now I'd like to discuss which of the four, if we would like.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant you were going to hold off on that on another day.
No, 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 no.
Because I was gonna say, you're not gonna be here. Okay, all right, you got it.
No, no.
All right.
I've already, I've already swallowed the cyanide pill. And for those, for those who dis-
You got an extra one?
I've got a packet full of them there. We're gonna have a cyanide party. Anyhow, I know, I know. Because I really, I really, I'm gonna burden myself. I am, if I haven't already, I attended all three of the meetings. Am I creating a?
No, it's our network. Our net, we lost Ms. Court, so we should probably-
And so what are we doing here?
I think we're waiting for her to come back in. Question.
I don't want to compete.
Just give it a second, she'll-
She dropped the internet. The cyanide gum.
I feel like it, I'm getting all kind of eyes.
Was it the person who was connected in?
It just bounced back.
Doesn't have a limit.
All right, there you go.
Okay, thank you very much. But, um, I listened and, as hard as I could and wrote as fast as I could, every concern, as I said before, was more about traffic, density, a little about the water, once we found out there was water underneath, but not very much that didn't, that didn't appear to affect or bother the respondents. And I was just shocked about how many really didn't talk about the golf course. They really didn't care about it.
Well, that was the number one, though, honestly, in that-
Yeah, I'm saying, but when it came out, I didn't hear a lot of golfers saying, please do something to that golf course, or we're gonna lose it. So that's my number one. So whatever respondent, responding RFP, that was mine. Whatever they did, I was more concerned about that. Second was, we need a golf club. That was my number two. And we have wonderful events that can no longer be held anywhere, anywhere in our city because it's too expensive to go to some of the other hotel venues, and we've outgrown the clubhouse. And I specifically talk about the Martin Luther King Breakfast. It has outgrown our city, and it originated here, it should be here, but we have no place for it. In fact, I believe we're about to outgrow Indian Springs. Thank you. So we need to bring it back home, and we need a golf club that's gonna do it. So I don't want to blur out mine, but those are the things that were important to me. Traffic, no matter who we choose, is going to be impacted. I'm not asking for trips. I know that whatever we do is going to impact the traffic. If we decide we're going to do something, traffic is a consideration. And since that seemed to be the number one issue, I would hope that whomever we choose would take that into consideration. The second thing to take into consideration is, we have an infrastructure of well water that we need to talk about and discuss, and make that important enough to have it brought back and a part of our, their offering to us. That's just about it. Those are my two things. The workforce housing, always good, but if we're going to talk about density, that's going to be important, because you're going to have people who are going to be going and coming, come, and going at peak hours in the morning and in the after, in the evening. So, again, thank you, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your input, thank you for your time. Don't go away, it's not over, as Mr. Moore continuously said. But I thank you for indulging me, listening, not being able to give you feedback at that moment, and I'm ready to vote.
Did anybody else want to say anything?
Oh, sure, I mean, I will. So I'm gonna go back. For those, I think many that are here know, we, we spent hours a few weeks ago on this. And to me, I wrote on the top of my notes, my priorities were an 18-hole championship golf course and improved clubhouse. When we talk about traffic, I didn't write it down, but I think a key component is the neighborhood doesn't want traffic in their neighborhood anymore. They made that very, very clear. So I, I just have my, the highlights of my notes from the presentation, and the first presenter was CGHP Development, Hansel Phelps. They stated that they wanted to change the golf course layout, replace all nine wells, they want a hotel. I stated before we heard from anything, I'm just not interested in a hotel there. It's the lowest total revenue to the city, but it's also the least risk to the city. The second presentation was Mill Creek slash Bobby Jones. Well, they started off with Mr. Reese Jones, who designed Torrey Pines, who I think you all know, it might be the nicest public course in the country, if not the world. They would renovate the existing clubhouse, so it'd be, I think, kind of putting Band-Aids on what we have. They have a big retail component, 8,000 square foot retail. They have a range with Top Tracer, I think 30 covered tea stations. That was very exciting as well. Then the third proposer was Heatherwood. They brought in their architect, a guy, gentleman named Tyler Ray, who's unbelievable, too. He might be, he's restored over 30 Donald Ross courses, and I think that's important to many people. They have no Florida experiences, very low density. They have, from my notes, two entrances through the communities. I think that isn't a good thing. They proposed adding water hazards to the course, and they stated they want to bring the country club lifestyle to the public. And the last presenter was Related. They have a gentleman by Jack Nicholas who's proposing to design it. To me, and I know Ms. Johnson stated it, and I agree with her, clubhouse is crucial. And to me, what they're proposing for the clubhouse was the best. 25,000 square feet off of Atlantic Avenue. So the entrance would be off of West Atlantic Avenue instead of the communities, which I think the community has spoken, that's what they'd like to see. The Nicholas Group has done 435 golf courses worldwide, Top Tracer, and entertainment driving range, which I think is very important for young people that are trying to enter the sport and may not want to play nine or 18 holes, but they like going to Topgolf. This wouldn't be a Topgolf thing, but it'd be kind of a, a smaller version. Iconic clubhouse for the city. Financials was 25 million for seven acres. So they're asking for the smallest number of acres, seven acres. Zero hotel, and I think what really stood out to me, for city residents. 75% discount for city residents, the average price per round is $27, that would range from $14 off-season, $35 in-season. So I don't know if we're, we're giving choices now, or how, how you want to do that, but those are my highlights.
Yep.
My, my question to you, though, about that, that's a little odd to me.
Bring your, bring your microphone to me.
I'm sorry, when you look at Related Group and they talk about their golf operations revenue, it's over a million dollars. And the other applicants are all in the 235, 188, $228,000 range. How are they making $800,000 more in operational revenue and going to keep the fees low?
Yeah, listen.
That doesn't make any mathematical sense.
The gentlemen can answer that better than me.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, there was a gentleman on the line that was Shane, that was the financial guy, he might be able to answer it, and we, we definitely need to know that. But more importantly, at the last meeting, we were told that there wasn't the agreement with that particular group that was going to run the, the, the operations. So how-
How are they giving revenue?
How can you promise something that you're, don't even have any control over if you're not running it? That was the question that I had.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
I do have, to that point, I have in my notes, would do a separate RFP for course operator.
Right, but, right, I understand, but I don't think that until they get to that point, they would know what the income would be. It seems very-
Or the fees.
-the cart before the horse. And to me, that's bait, that I, you know, because if it doesn't, if it doesn't come to fruition, who is the, who is the community going to blame for that? Right up here, right up here.
They're gonna blame us anyways.
Well, but what I'm trying to say is that, you know, I don't know that that's realistic, because-
You know, just the answer, and I have no idea. You gentlemen know better than me. But if you have a clubhouse of that size, and you're having more events, and more lunches, and, and more things, they're probably taking that into consideration, but I don't know.
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll just jump in. One of the things that I think that we need to take into consideration, especially after looking at the surveys, you know, I look at the two proposals that take seven to 10 acres, which is, you know, five, six, seven, like 5% of, of the total acreage. And, and do give us a new clubhouse, expanded clubhouse. And Ms., Ms. Johnson, you're absolutely right, it's not just the Martin Luther King Breakfast. If the Opal can't house the event for one of our nonprofits or for one of our for-profits, or sometimes doesn't, if they are not able to donate it, then it leaves our city. The library just had to have an event under a tent at a resident, at, at a residence house, because there are no options.
We have no place.
So I think, you know, that is essential, and two, two of the proposals give us those options. The big thing for- The big thing for me, though, is after looking at all the feedback, and the concern of traffic, not a surprise, is that one of them, the Related Group, only has residential. And if you look at our traffic around our city, it has a lot to do with, if you go to Linton, it has a lot to do with the grocery stores, and the retail, and the commerce, and if you go on Atlantic Avenue, it obviously has a lot to do with entertainment, the restaurants and everything we have to offer there. Theirs would only be residential traffic. In the case of Phelps, theirs has residential, but then it also has retail, which is gonna create a lot of traffic. It also has a hotel, which will create traffic. Both the retail and the hotel will have staff, which the Related Group won't have staff for their retail, or for their hotel, because they don't have it. And what really concerns me is, when this is a success, and everybody wants to be there, and the hotel is holding a conference on a Friday night, which is the same night someone's getting married at our clubhouse, which is the same time that the restaurant is packed because it's a Friday night, what does the traffic look like then? That's why that project concerns me.
I ask, could we explain, or just even for my benefit, to, just to be clear, I wanna make sure I'm 100% clear, with the G, the CGHP, Hansel Phillips, we are not giving away any land, correct? Unless at the conclusion of the 30 years, we decide to sell it at full value. Is that correct?
Correct. Leanne, you wanna add anything to that?
No, I don't have anything to add to that. It, that is the lease structure, you're correct about that.
Okay, thank you very much. See, Ms. Johnson, if I'm, and Mr. Frankel, bottom line is, we shouldn't be giving away taxpayer land if we don't have to, and this could get us to where we want to go for the residents. They are making a compromise, because they're not interested in additional apartments, and I understand that, but it's the lowest units, it's endorsed by the Donald Ross Foundation, it's got a strong labor plan, it's got that interesting range that sounds pretty cool, and it's also not giving away one square foot of our taxpayers' property, which we really shouldn't be doing. We don't have property to give away, we can't afford to give it away, and at the end of 30 years, if the residents say we wanna sell it for value, it will be very valuable at that point in time, then they can make that determination.
May I respond?
Sure.
Okay, I look at page five, and if you look at the private, the public-private acreage, I look at the footprint. Related has the smallest footprint, if you appreciate these numbers, trust these numbers, and I would hate to say, Deputy Vice Mayor, in five to 10, 15 years, they're probably gonna sell it. It's gonna be the trend, because the city has not been able to maintain the golf course.
Wait a second, we're gonna sell what?
I think you're on Related, but I'm not talking about, I'm talking about CGHP.
I know you are. You said it's all choice, and if we decide that we can sell it or keep it.
No, no, in 30 years, you have the option, but the point is.
I understand that.
You own, the residents retain ownership of their property, and this is the only, this is the only applicant that allows the residents to retain their property. Otherwise, we're giving away taxpayer property, and I'm not comfortable with that.
We're not giving, just to correct, we're not giving.
We're exchanging it.
Exchange, right, we're exchanging.
Correct.
For tens of millions of dollars, we're not.
Well, in some instances, yes, and others, no.
I just think it's important that we're not, we're not giving away, we're not giving away land, it's just, you know.
The applicant that is allowing us to retain the ownership is offering to do the most underground work.
Yeah, no, I agree with all the points you made, I just, I've heard that now three times, that we're giving away land, we're not giving away.
Well, that's what the residents believe in all those emails we received.
And I think the main issue that the residents have is, they don't want the green space developed. It's not so much about the.
That would be 100% of all the units, the things, then, yeah, okay.
But that's, that's the real concern, to say.
And they're getting no golf course.
Hold on to it, and 30 years later, we're gonna have some flexibility. That, most of the individuals I've spoken to, that's not going to make them feel any better. They don't want the green space developed.
Period.
And granted, that's how a P3 works, right? We don't, in the P3, we're not the ones that come with the checkbook, we're usually the ones that come with the asset.
And you see the benefits.
Exactly.
So, it's a win-win in my book, whichever one we choose, but I appreciate your.
So, again, let's just go back to the infrastructure part of it, I think it's important to point out.
Infrastructure is one of the most important things. If someone comes in, and they fix the golf course, and we don't fix the pipes underneath.
It wasn't a part of the, as far as I understand, was it a part, was the water wells consideration a part of the proposal?
Yes, absolutely.
It was. Leanne, do you wanna respond to specifics on the RFP, what that contained?
Yeah, I'm looking at page four of the RFP that was issued, and it does say, the project must include infrastructure improvements, including but not limited to drainage, recirculation, raw water wells, and transmission line, water main, irrigation system, and then it goes on to list parking lot repairs and some other things. So, the RFP certainly did contemplate the wells.
And can I, can I point out just?
Did she just say, but not related to? Does that mean, if I'm gonna do a proposal?
No, not limited.
Not limited to.
Sorry, not limited to.
Not limited to, okay.
Okay, and so, let's go back to the golf improvements, because if I'm understanding this correctly, is this the figure that we would be looking at that differentiates what kind of money's going into the infrastructure? Would be on page 10 of my little pamphlet, capital budget, golf improvements. You have 23 million for the Bobby Jones, you have 33 million for Hansel Phillips, you have 21 million for Heatherwood, and you have Related being 19 million. Related is the lowest, and that would include your golf course, your clubhouse, your infrastructure, everything, that would, they would be putting into it for the public, correct? There's a huge difference.
That's correct.
Okay, there's a huge difference between Related and the, and the, and the Hansel, and the reason for that, more than likely, is the fact that when we were hearing the presentations, Hansel Phillips was doing all of it, whereas Related was like, well, there was a well or two that they may do, and then some other substructure, that's what I understood.
Right, I just want clarification on Related, their, the value that you see there, that 19.8 million, that's the golf course improvement number?
Okay.
Their public, their public proffer was 25 million in total, so I think there was a, there was a $5 million check essentially that was being written to the city, that would be, that you could use.
Okay, so their total investment then is 25 million, you're saying?
Correct, Shane, is that how you see it?
Related Group was for 25 million.
Thank you.
They would use that money for the public improvements, and then anything remaining would be released to the city, and they estimated that there'd be about 5.2 million remains, but the 19.8 was for all their public improvement estimates.
Okay, so, was that just the way that they were doing it for Related? Everybody else, it's, that's the entire investment, or am I missing what they would be handing back in some of these other ones as well? So, in other words, I bet.
Related was the only.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Related was the only one that said, there's another $5.2 million, City, you can use that for what you want.
Okay.
So, Related's total investment is 25 million, they just specified that their course improvements or public improvements would be 19.8, and then the city can use the other 5.2 at your discretion.
Got it.
So, that would be the golf course, I'm sorry, the golf course and the clubhouse, is that?
Now, that 5.2, then you can.
No, no, I meant the amount that they, yes.
The 19.
Okay, I, my questions are answered, if there's no others, I don't know if there's anybody else that has any further questions or concerns. We can entertain a motion if we'd like to make one, if anybody would.
I'd like to make a motion that we award the, can I say it that way? That we make the award to Related Group?
Well, negotiate, I would say.
And with negotiations, et cetera, whatever the process is.
Do you have a second?
Second for the city attorney to discuss.
So, essentially, what you would be doing is you would direct staff to negotiate with Related, and bring forth an agreement that would come back to the city for approval.
Can you walk me through that negotiation process? Are there any details that you're looking to add to that negotiation?
Well, I think they've heard us, and if they want to come to a happy conclusion, with the others waiting in the wings, they know what we're after. I don't, I can't put any more into it.
So, we have to be careful, right? So, they've given you the proposal, and while you can't, you have the ability to take away from the proposal, you can't really add to it.
Okay.
And so, we're not gonna be negotiating, you know, for example, you know, adding additional buildings or something, not that that's what you're interested in, but do you see what I'm saying? So, if they're proposing 600 units, we can take away, we can, you know, say, well, no, we're interested in 300 or 400, but of course, remember, there's a give and take, right? So, that's what the negotiation is gonna entail, but we're not gonna be adding things.
Specifically, when we talk about the density, the community's spoken, the less dense the project, the, probably the less profit they'll get, I don't know what the give and take is, but the less density, then the less traffic. So, it's, it's not adding, we're gonna be taking away, if that's what they choose to do.
Right, but we just, we really just can't be redesigning it.
No.
Okay, so, anyone else? Call the, call the roll, please. Mr. Boylston?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
No.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
No.
Any other thoughts?
I'll entertain a motion for the Hansel Phillips.
I think I'll make a motion.
Motion, yep, I'll make it, and entertain it.
Do both.
Need a second?
Yes, I do.
Do we have a second?
No, okay.
I'll, I'll pass, well, no, I won't, just.
It won't pass, anyway, so nothing's gonna happen on the golf course. Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Any other ideas? You wanna make a motion to table it? I mean, you were thinking about that doing to begin with, but, I mean, I think that we.
That's what I was gonna do.
Well, I understand, but, you know, we're here, and I think that.
I first wanted to see if, yeah, if anything moved forward, but now, I would, I would like to, do I have to date certain?
Yeah.
No.
You, I mean, you can do, table it, I don't wanna do date certain, because there's issues on that right now, not that this requires public notice, but you can table it for a workshop, you can table it for, for the discussion, you know, as a regular agenda item in the next two to three months. I think you would wanna give your new colleagues time to get up to speed, and meet with staff, and do the homework that they need before, so, you know, it's really your pleasure, if you wanna workshop, or if you wanna actual agenda item to basically reconsider.
I think, I think at the very least, it needs to be workshop, especially with the addition of the two new colleagues of mine. So, I will make a motion to table this, to date uncertain to a future workshop.
Okay.
May I add?
Do we have a second?
No.
Well, we can't.
Well, it won't make a difference, okay, I won't have.
Need a second. Yeah, we need a second.
Second for Commissioner Johnson to discuss.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure trying to get this down the road a little bit further. I thank everyone for allowing me that opportunity. I'd just like to say, once we do this vote, it's gonna be clock ticking, and I would like to say, if anybody ever wants to come to Delray to do business in the future, they're gonna have second thoughts about it.
I do, I just, I wanna say one thing, we have to be mindful of that, because we're tabling this, now, the cone of silence is in effect, and so, we have to be mindful, and I'll explain it to your new colleagues, that we're not, you know, having out-of-the-sunshine conversations with anybody who's involved in one of the proposals.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
I second that, I can do it for discussion.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
No.
Ms. Cassell?
What happens if we say no? I mean, we have to go back and just talking in circles?
No, there's something we can do.
Okay, then I'll say no and see what that is, that's a surprise, I guess. Sorry, forgive me.
And Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Okay, so, what can we do?
I mean, at this point, all you can do is just reject all proposals, I mean, there's really.
Oh, God.
I mean, either we have another discussion.
And then what happens if, that's, how much money have the taxpayers invested in this process, if you don't mind me asking?
Should we not choose one today? I think they should know that.
I would just like to know, yeah.
I think CBRE is on a retainer, I'm not sure what that retainer amount is.
They could probably tell us, what's your invoice year-to-date?
It's approximately 7,000 a month.
For the last 12 months?
For about 11 months, yes, ma'am.
I'll just, I'll just say that, if we're able to take some additional time, like I said, those other decisions had a firm deadline, they had an election date, this one doesn't. The fact that we made two motions that were negotiate, to negotiate with no specifics on what we were negotiating, that worries me. When we make a motion months from now, if we do, then they'd have specifics on what we would wanna negotiate, the intensity of a project, or the inclusion of a hotel, or the amount of retail space for traffic considerations, but neither of those motions took into account anything like that to include in the negotiations, it said, just go negotiate.
Make a motion.
So, that's what, I, I'm not prepared to put any of that in negotiation without having more time with the public, and so, that's why I'm asking to table it.
Okay, can I make a motion and reconsider the last vote?
Second.
Okay, so, the vote on the reconsideration is?
The reconsideration for Mr. Boylston's motion to table.
Table, okay. Call the roll, please. Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Does he need to make his last?
All right, so.
Well, no.
We will be doing this all over again.
Correct, now we've, now you can reconsidered it, so now you need a motion to.
Right, right.
Table it, too.
Absolutely. All right, so, I have a couple of other things, topics, I wanted to talk with my colleagues about, no?
Go ahead.
No.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your hard work.
Thank you.
And all your time.
I just wanna be clear.
All right, hold on just a minute, let these guys get out.
Do we have to vote?
I don't know, should we, we're gonna wait, let these guys move out, she's gonna tell us what we can and can't do here. So, if everybody can take their conversations into the lobby, so that we can go ahead and continue, that'd be great, thank you.
We won't discuss that here, but you just make a motion.
Okay, so, okay, so now we need a motion to table it until we have a workshop.
So, moved?
Call the roll, please. Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Sure.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Mayor Petolia? Yes.
All right, so, let me just bring, oh, did you wanna speak?
No, it was just a simple comment that will arrange us date specific, and will offer advice and recommendations in that regard soon, so that we can continue the consideration process. Thank you.
Okay, so, there was a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Number one, just wanted to make sure my colleagues are okay, we're working on a proclamation for a, I think it's 90th year for the FAU, they've asked for all the surrounding towns to give them a proclamation, which we're, I'm okay, I think we're okay with, unless.
That's fine, that would be 60 years, I believe.
60 years, I'm sorry, yes, that's right, that's right, it has to be 60 years, my dad worked on the grounds there when I was a kid, so, has to be 60 years. So, anyway, so they've asked us to do that, and then the second thing is, is if we end up with a winner, winner, chicken dinner down there, I think we should do something really special for them as well, you know, they're gonna be playing in these, the final four, and then we're gonna go to the finals, so, I'm kind of excited about that. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and this is something that.
We still have two other items.
Oh, do we?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't wanna interrupt, but.
I didn't even see that, I'm just looking at my front page, I am so sorry.
The last time I looked.
I apologize, I didn't even know, okay, so, excuse me. All right, so, we have, we have the Resolution Number 65-23.
So, this is a retroactive bid waiver for the management of the golf course. Right now, we need to have a retroactive approval, because the management agreement expired.
Right.
We were in the middle of a solicitation, which we canceled, because we were concerned about the bids we were gonna get. This is for one year, however, if you felt more comfortable doing less time, you know, I, because of the uncertainty of what's gonna happen after we table it, I'm gonna leave
of what's going to happen after we table it, I'm going to leave it up to you. But, you know, at some point, we do need to get direction as to whether or not we're going to move forward with a formal solicitation. The concern from staff is that if people know that we're going to potentially enter into a P3 agreement, they may not want to spend the resources to have a short-term agreement to manage the golf course. And so that's why we're kind of in limbo, but at a minimum, we need to get an agreement in place.
So Lynn, the question I have for you is, we have a 30-day out with this contract?
We always have a termination.
Okay, so we can terminate without cause, giving them the notice in the event. The second thing that I am concerned about with respect to this is that if we do do less than a year, it sends a signal to all of the people who are also working there that might start looking for other jobs and then all of a sudden, we don't have staff. So I'm okay with this, but I just want to make sure that we can get out of it if we need to, if we're changing, shifting and going in a different direction.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, call the roll, please. Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
And then finally, we have Resolution 57-23.
This is to order an agreement with Parkings, One Parking LLC. They have a very short presentation, if you're interested. Since our last meeting, we did bring this before the Parking Management Advisory Board, as directed by the, well, not directed, but suggested by the commission. And I think they were favorable to it.
Parking Advisory Board was favorable?
It was, that's correct.
I'm looking out at the board and they're saying they're not.
That wasn't what I, the information I received.
Gentlemen's at the podium.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and do our presentation. We can have the conversation afterwards. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I understand I have about three minutes on this. If I'm wrong about that, someone, go ahead and tell me.
Three minutes?
It's not public comment.
I know. He was told three minutes, but hopefully we can not use ten.
I can linger, I can come back if you'd like on anything. Our company, we're 20 years in business, just up the road in West Palm Beach. We have 100-plus locations in 14 different markets. Our biggest markets are West Palm Beach, Chicago, Washington DC and New York City. You see on the screen 26 different municipalities that we have experience in, within our company. And our team, if my team would stand up, please. One of the advantages I believe we bring is that nobody flew in here tonight. Everybody's just 22 minutes up the road. It took me 22 minutes to get here today. I timed it. So we're very close, we're your neighbors. We have Kirsten Dolan founded the company with her late husband, Greg Sussex. She remains the CEO and our leader. Myself as the president, John Giaquinti and Jenny are both sitting in the audience. Mike Tooten, Chris Hall will be our boots-on-the-ground project manager on a daily basis. And Zach is in our corporate office as a business analyst. How will we do this? The people, the technology and the financials. We have in the proposal given to city staff, a general manager, a project manager, regional manager allocation, meter enforcement, event personnel, office collection administrators, technicians to handle your on-street devices and porters to keep the garages clean. In general, we have an enforcement shift from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, then shift two from 4:00 PM to 12:00. We have a meter technician on the street to handle your 79 meters when they're broken, et cetera, et cetera. And we have garage porters, as mentioned. The technology we'll use is, runs a gamut from PCI, DSS compliance, EV charge stations, smart stations that will text the person at the EV charge station and tell them their car is finished being charged. Come get your car and move it so someone else can use it. I could spend a long time on this slide alone. I'm going to kind of go through it and I can come back to it if you'd like. Sometimes a crude drawing says a million words. This is my drawing, when I was thinking about trying to explain how the LPR technology that we will use on surface lots and in the garages, how it works. But in general, if you look over on the lower left-hand corner, you have a car coming in. Two LPR cameras capture that that car entered at 5:30 PM, license plate ABC123. That information goes to the tech cloud. And the cloud asks, was a payment made by phone for the $5 that is due? Was a payment made to the T2 Luke? And that's the device you walk up to on the streets and in the garages. If that answer is no for both of those, a citation is issued. And that's just about it. That's very rudimentary and very simple, but I think it gets a message across of LPR, license plate recognition and how that can work. The cameras kick on after, what is it, 4 o'clock? After 4 o'clock, when people are supposed to start paying in the garages. And the cameras are on on the surface lots the entire time people are supposed to start paying. In addition, when we presented to city staff, we had a fully electric GEM vehicle on which we would mount the camera that you see on the far left. And we drive the streets, looking for cars, looking for license plates. And it's the same process as I just showed on the picture, right? Except the LPR cameras I depicted here are mobile, mounted atop, in this case, a Chevy Bolt. The GEM that I had talked about in the previous presentations doesn't have the amps necessary to run the cameras, the computer, the printer and everything that would be contained within the vehicle. Then the small item you see above the plus sign is a simple handheld that can do the same functions as the Genetek camera that's mounted on top of the Chevy Bolt. Not real visible. This is our full budget for 12 months and stretching out five years. And in the budget, we have everything from the payroll to the liability insurance, to uniforms, to miscellaneous. We, in general, have proposed, if we break this down into the three major categories that we seem to be discussing over the six months of this process, we have a management fee in year one of $54,000, operating expenses in year one of $775-ish, and then amortization of $22,000. The amortization is for the purchase of these things. The enforcement tech is what drives the Genetek camera and tells us if the car that we're looking at has paid via a cell phone or via the T2 Luke. All this takes place in the cloud. The Chevy Bolts now take the place of the gems, which don't have sufficient amps to power what we need to have powered. And then a small amount of office furniture, desks and chairs that we need to bring to the office. Citation revenue in general, and this is not intended to be the final. This is intended to be an example. We take our marching orders from the city. If the city decides they want a citation of $6, and that's eventually what we send, but there has to be a convenience fee, which is, in our proposal, a push to the parking customer. And the citation would be $39.99 if paid in 14 days. If paid after, let's say it jumps to $60 with the convenience fee, $64.99. The division of funds is such that $39.99 is received, $4.99 goes to tech and another $5 goes to tech. And by tech, I mean the cameras, the infrastructure, the people to chase the tickets and citations, the credit card charges associated with taking the payments, turnkey, everything associated with citations comes out of the $4.99 and $5 tech fees. I'm not going to let this linger too much. This is the Pompano Beach snapshot. This is just showing that before we took the contract, 2019, not COVID, impacted, there were 6,400 transactions. And last year, we did 14,000 and revenue for that city has more than doubled. I'm going to skip off that and leave this, but quickly mention that I think we've done a good job in Pompano Beach, but it would be disingenuous of me to stand up here and say that we drove all that. Pompano Beach has added restaurants and the pier and many things to attract people. We're just controlling the money a bit better. We're issuing more citations. I think we've brought some of that improvement to the table, but I don't want to claim it all. Then Y1 Parking, financial proposal. Successful execution of staffing efficiencies through technology. We struck a balance of people and tech. We improved typically the capture of violators and we process efficiencies resulting in significant financial improvement. We have the municipal experience that I've illustrated. Executives collaborated with cities for over 35 years. Myself, I've been doing parking for 40 years now. And most of those cities that I showed, I've worked in. I've been in 48 different markets in the 40 years that I've been doing parking. City of Pompano Beach just showed the results. We understand municipal expectation levels. And key staff with over 15 years of experience, myself and Kirsten alone can claim 70 to 75 years of experience in parking. Tech thought leaders, if you, if you come out of a parking garage today, you usually don't see cashiers, you usually don't see people. In 1999, I could see this headed in that direction. So I filed patents for a process of melding two-way audio/video into parking devices. And today, that technology is in thousands of locations. So I've been around tech and parking a bit myself. And then we take advantage of some of the best tech that's offered within our industry. We have real-time occupancy reporting. We have sensors. We can put in spaces to tell your constituents where a space is open and where a space is not. That, the cost, the capex of that is not in our proposal, but we can certainly get it done if you decided you wanted to go that route. Aggregate the best of tech. Then local advantage, again, we're just up the street. We have 24/7 response. It's not unusual for our client in Pompano to call me in the morning and I'm there having lunch to talk about the issues we have going on in Pompano. 100-plus employees, just 25 minutes away in Palm Beach. Community partnerships, The Lord's Place, March of Dimes, Families First of Palm Beach County, and Florida Restaurant Lodging. And again, the most valuable resource we have is sitting right here in the audience with me. Okay, with that, I certainly did make three minutes, but I didn't go on forever. And I'm open for any questions.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, for good measure, I think it would be appropriate to enable Cynthia Bousan, who is representing the Department of Public Works regarding this matter this evening, to share with the commission the experience relative to the Parking Management Advisory Group.
Come on up.
So that that is clearly understood because there's some contradictions haven't been experienced this evening. But to be clear, please.
Great, thank you. Cynthia Bousan, I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works. Last week at the PMAP Parking Management Board, the One Parking representatives did show up and we gave a little bit longer of the same presentation and explained to the Parking Management Board what the things that we're looking forward to and how the solicitation process worked and allowed them the opportunity for some healthy interaction as to questions and answers so that they could feel more comfortable with how we're moving forward.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Don't go anywhere.
Okay.
I want to ask some questions first. Is there anybody else that you wanted to bring up? Are you good? All right, to the commission then. Did you want to start?
Oh, yes. First of all, this is a change. I'm a little confused, the Parking Board put out a bid or-
No, the city did.
Solicitation or?
It's a city solicitation.
City solicitation. And One Parking was the only?
No, the city received five submittals. And then there was a selection committee of city staff. And they went through the usual process of ranking the firms. One Parking, they ranked the firms and then they had presentations. And from a result of those two activities, One Parking was the selected vendor. And then the city entered into negotiations with that vendor.
Is that the way it works?
Pretty much.
So why are we looking at it? Why are we looking at it? I'm confused. If they've already awarded it, they've chosen it.
So we did a formal solicitation.
So we have to agree.
We're just rubber stamping what the Parking Management Board-
We're approving the agreement. No, no, this has nothing to do with the Parking Management Board. So the city staff sat on a selection committee and an evaluation committee. They reviewed the proposals, they heard presentations, they ranked the proposals. This is who they suggested as being the best proposal for the city commission to consider. And today, we have the agreement for your consideration and approval.
The Parking Management Advisory Group was a courtesy based on suggestions that haven't been offered at a previous meeting. So the Department of Public Works and everyone else involved responded to said suggestion and therefore offered an opportunity last week to discuss and engage.
Can we ask the board to step forward and-
So just so we're clear, so, you know, the Parking Advisory Board gives policy, suggestions, recommendations to the city commission. So it's our understanding that I guess in the past, they may have participated in this process, which is really, you know, from a legal perspective, you always have to be careful with having non-city staff members sitting on an evaluation committee because there's certain rules and processes that have to be followed. And that's why we encourage staff who are truly the subject matter experts. So the purview of the Parking Management Board is not to approve these agreements, right?
No, no, we understand that, but they're shaking their heads during the conversation and I'm getting, just curious what their opinion is.
It's your purview if you want to open up to public comment.
Please, thank you. Someone from the board want to come speak? Sure, thank you.
How are you?
Good, here in Hollyburg. Parking Management Board. My concern was, I don't see how they change anything that Lanier is not already doing. Because y'all control the parking, right? Y'all control the rates. They make their money off, after talking to them, they make their money off of the garages, of the convenience fee. We don't fill the garages. So we're going to bring in a new company, pay more, pay money to them when all actuality, y'all are the ones who decide what goes on. So by getting a new company, it's not changing anything that I understand. Does that make sense?
And that's, that was my, that was, that was my confusion. It's, there's just, something didn't happen here that happens in the previous ones. Number one, was there's a problem with the previous one? We were open for it, it was their contract was up and it was time to rebid.
It was time to do a new solicitation, so staff reviewed the proposals, heard the presentations and ranked them. So there is a ranking process, which I know you've engaged in that, especially through your CRA roles. So staff engaged in that process and ranked them. One Parking was the best proposal for whatever, maybe it was a point system. I don't, I'm not, I wasn't there. And so then staff negotiates an agreement, which is what we bring forward to you. I think Cynthia can come forward and provide you insight as to what's different and why perhaps-
Yes, I would like to hear that, especially if the Parking Management Board representative is now saying, what's the difference between the two? Maybe we need to-
What he's saying is that other things have to be addressed, not just the management.
And the widgets part.
We have a parking management problem. We don't have parking spots that don't exist. We have a parking management problem. Their convenience fee, when I talked to them, spoke to them afterwards, because I was trying to let them know, if you're trying to make your income off of the garages, we don't fill the garages. So why are we getting rid of one company to take on another company if we still have the same issue?
Especially if they toss more. And we already have the widgets for the occupancy of the garages. I don't, I was going to ask if we have notification for the various parking spaces on the street? If that's something new?
Right.
App or something, that would be nice, but-
No, I'm glad you bring that up. That's actually, when they present, when these different firms present to city staff, they present different technologies that they have available that would help us do better in the future, whether it's collecting more revenue or collecting more citations. And One Parking actually submitted that they're going to introduce 30 more license plate readers throughout our corridor. So that should pick up additional citations, additional parking citations that aren't presently being picked up today.
This company, you said one?
This company, One Parking, has proposed to install 30 additional LPRs. So our revenue should increase from that. And then additionally, they've offered to assist the city in implementing different strategies from the Parking and Curbside Management Plan. So there are technology options, as he was alluding to, that could help us do better on collection. One of the, just to toss out- One of the, just to toss out, one of the ones that comes off hand is being able to see online, real-time, where parking spaces are available. And that technology exists and they've implemented it in other places. So if that's something the city's interested in implementing, you know, that's something we could bring forward.
If I may, what is the cost that we, the contract we work? Does the difference in the cost, is this considerably more because we expect to get greater revenues? I apologize, I'm going to be very frank with you. I did not even realize this item was on here. And I did not look at the backup. I thought we had one item because that's what we... My fault, my apology. I'm saying that honestly. But what I'd like to know is, is this a substantial increase from what we were paying before? If so, do you expect that it compensates for itself with this new technology and greater citation ability?
No, that's a great question. It's actually going to be a decrease, at least for the first year.
All right.
And then it goes up in future years. So at one point, it will be higher than the current rate, but it's still lower than our current proposer had submitted on.
What's the contract period?
Contract period is for three years. And then I proposed an additional two.
Do you know what the revenue is for our parking revenue right now? I mean, this is going to be an $866,000 per year contract.
Yep.
And so I want to know what that's bringing in as far as revenue?
Off the top of my head, I believe it's...
So Dunkley, I think you're qualified to address that question.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor. The revenue is $3.6 million in parking revenue and then an additional $930,000 in citation revenue annually.
So it's almost a wash with respect to the, this ticketing versus people putting in the money. I mean, obviously, if you're not going to have ticketing, they're not going to put the money in anyway. So, you know, you have to have one and not without the other. But, so, you know, I mean, I hate tickets. You know, we used to be a different city here when I first started. There was a little guy in a golf cart that used to go around and...
He used to walk.
Volunteer and chalk on the back of the car. Absolutely. And honestly, it was a much softer town. And then we had my predecessor, the person who preceded me in this position that saw this as monetizing. And the truth of the matter is, is yes, it does. And any other city that I go into, we do pay parking meters. I get it. And I know that that was a hard thing for a lot of people to swallow. It still is for me. I just don't want a predatory type of a, you know, situation. When somebody's coming up here and telling me how much, how many more tickets they put out there, I want to pull my hair out because you know who gets those calls?
Yes.
Right here. And people are upset and are never coming back to our town. And it gives us a bad reputation. You know, it's just, it's one of those things where I'm not looking to try to make, you know, a bigger score. I want people to come here, have a great experience and walk away happy, not like uncomfortable because they just spent $200 in a restaurant and now they've got a $35 parking ticket. I just hate that.
I was still trying to question when Deputy Vice Mayor injected her question. In Pompano Beach, how long have you been the parking...
There we go.
Company?
Going on two years.
Two years?
Right.
So you may not be able to answer this one off the top of your head. How many complaints? Because I presume they went from some other company to you and the parking fees, et cetera, citation fees went up?
No, no. The number of citation issued went up, but the parking citation cost did not, right? And again, you have that control. If you want to cut citation fees in half, you can do it. We still enforce. I just say that what we do encourages turn of the spaces. Otherwise, you can park in that space for a week and there's no repercussions. If you want more and more people visiting your beaches, then you encourage the turn of the cars and allow two or three people to park in one space.
It's always been the desire to turn over.
That's how you do it, is with the technology.
Just one more question. Do you happen to know the complaint number? Or is that a city, they come to the city, not to you?
No, they come to us. They come...
Do you know how many?
Mike, do you have any idea?
Past year or last three months or COVIDs?
Come on up and say your name.
Set the microphone, please.
Mike runs the City of Pompano Beach force and would also be involved in this operation.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Mike Two, One Parking.
Hold on, go ahead.
Okay, Michael Two, One Parking. So on average, the complaints do come directly to us. They come either by phone or they walk right into the building to our desk. And I would say, just to throw an average, on average, I would say we get two to three a day. It's not an exorbitant amount. The majority of the folks who receive citations come in and do the mea culpa. I'm, you know, I'm sorry, my bad, I didn't pay. I parked across two lines, I took up extra spaces. So we don't have a lot of arguments, a lot of conflict, but we'll have a couple in a day. Typically, the people that take it a step further, that want to contest, that take it to court, is going to be maybe one every two weeks. Maybe, sometimes less than that.
Right now, we are having our current parking management team take care of the citations, et cetera. Does the city inject itself in any way?
It's up to them.
I don't even know.
No. It's really up to them, the Linnier.
If you get a complaint about our valet, how would you handle it?
About our valet? Well, the valet in this instance is a third party. In Pompano Beach...
She's outside the parking.
I'm just asking, how would you handle it?
Yeah, we typically, we handle the valet in Pompano Beach. But if we were to handle it, I would say...
Handle the valet in Palm Beach and...
In Pompano Beach.
So let's roll it back. We're not talking valets here. We're just...
No, I just asked him...
I'm going to second Ms. Cassell's motion to approve.
Yes, thank you.
And all I'll add is that I think we do have to have a conversation about all the other elements. It's not going to, you know, just for the Parking Board. I know there's a lot of other... No, that's okay. So, but we will, we will address that. I'll be bringing it up at the next meeting during my comments to get it on a future agenda item. But this doesn't hold up, us putting this out the bid, going with staff's recommendation and having this new technology and this new partner available so that we can implement some of those recommendations from our Parking Advisory Board.
Cynthia, I know that we're still in the discussion period. I didn't get a chance to ask any questions. So if you can come up here, I just have a couple. Is this going to change anything in our meter system or anything like that? Are they using exactly what we have? We're not redoing anything of ours, correct?
No, the technology remains the same.
Okay. And that convenience fee, that's an absolute, that's a fee that we're not seeing any part of, correct? We don't have that currently on our...
There is a convenience fee presently.
On the current ones that we are doing?
Yes. If they pay, if they come to the office and they pay cash, they don't have a convenience fee. But if they choose to pay remotely or electronically, there's a convenience fee.
This is going to be without that? It's going to be no matter what, correct? No? Okay. All right, so it is, it's the same thing. Okay, very good. Those are the questions that I had. Correct. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Please call the roll.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Cynthia. Thank you, everybody else. All right, so finally, I just wanted to bring up one other issue. And that is, during the campaign, there was a lot of, there was a lot of talk about what was going to happen with Old School Square. And it's keeping me up at night, to be quite honest with you. We're moving down the road here with DDA. And I am, I mean, I heard it over and over again. I saw it in writing that, you know, our couple of commissioners that are going to come in and change that up. And I have a problem with it. So I just want to let everybody, I'm making it known that I think that we have got to give ourselves the time to be able to make sure that the DDA has the opportunity of really turning what we have sat idle around. And they're doing a great job between the city and the DDA right now. So I would like to put forward that, you know, we take out the 180-day clause that basically would be for cancellation for a period of time. Just to give them that opportunity.
I'd be in favor.
Me too. I totally agree with that.
Just that the contract gets to run, it's going to...
Yeah. You agree?
I absolutely agree.
So would you make a motion then to do that?
Wait a moment. Can we answer Ms. Johnson's question? How long is the contract term?
No, it's a five-year.
It's five. So in other words, nothing can change with that.
Is that not correct?
The initial term ends September 30th, 2024. And then there's two additional five-year terms.
Oh, okay.
They automatically renew unless notice is given, which is 180 days that you're...
Okay, so it'll end in 2024. So to the end of that, I mean, just to the end of that then. Listen, I think that they will have had the time to really get their feet on the ground at that point in time or not. And so my feeling is, is that I don't want to see them being capped at the knees after we've just paid $500,000.
I do just want to, and I'm absolutely in favor if you made this commitment.
Right.
This is what we voted on. As a matter of fact, I believe it was unanimous or close to it. Maybe it's 4-1, maybe it's 4-1. If it's not working out, if, you know, if things are failing, if the doors aren't open, if, you know, we do need a way to make a change. So I do want to make sure that we'd still have...
We have that, we have that. You know what that is? Money. It's the truth. I mean, we're providing the funding.
No, I mean, if the partnership isn't working...
Oh, absolutely.
You know what I mean? I do want to make sure we're not completely...
The only way you can do that is to have that. My feeling is, is that so far, so good to me. We have a very good organization. If you went to Sabre last night, you would understand. These are professionals, anything that they do. So from my perspective, I don't want to see us be undermined by, you know, promises that were made that are really going to then upset the apple cart again. We're just not, we're not moving forward, you know, quickly enough. We've got a lot of things in the pokers in the fire. To have to revisit this, I would...
I agree with you and I will not, absolutely will not. But to not have an out, even if it's not working, that I don't know if I can be...
You have to give it a reasonable amount of time before you could even assess it. But Ms. Johnson asked the question, Attorney Jelen, about making the initial contract period longer than just the year with the renewal. Is that something you could do and that would ensure?
Well, the initial contract year ends September 30th, 2024.
Yeah.
One and a half years from now.
Yeah, one and a half years from now.
So you could eliminate the notice requirement for that initial period. And then after subsequent, and we'll just put a little disclaimer, you know, for the initial period, you know, there will be no termination. The 180 days would start for the first five-year renewal.
I don't think much is going to change between now and, you know, at least to the next season because we don't even have, we're not going to have operational effect of that Crest Theater. I mean, we're just not. So from my perspective, they're going to have whatever's left on that year to get the Crest Theater up and running as well.
Like I said, it's just if, you know, we get to November next year. And I don't foresee it, but if it wasn't working, right? Like if it's just not working.
No, no, that goes back in. It's only just for the year and a half, just to be able to let...
That's what I'm talking about. November is within that year and a half. We're about to go in the season and the partnership's just not working. And we have no, we have no out, you know?
Well, I mean...
Do we have any agreements where we've taken out, taking out the opportunity?
The tennis contract. The difference with the tennis contracts is that the appropriations are built into it.
That's right. We don't have that. So you do have that, where you don't have to actually have the appropriations.
Funding.
That's correct.
Funding and funding.
So that's the holdup. And that's the thing that we still have control over. So it just feels right to me to give some support.
What do you think, Ms. Jelen?
I'm not averse to it because, like the mayor said, you, every year, you have to appropriate this contract. If it's really not working out and you don't have an out clause, you can give them $0. And you wouldn't be in violation of the agreement. There would be no breach. And the DDA would just have to figure out how to make it work or they would exercise, you know, we could mutually agree to terminate the agreement.
No, I, I'm in favor.
Okay.
Maybe you have three votes.
Can we have a motion?
So the motion, I mean, the DDA is here. Do you agree? Because we have to mutually, I mean, I know you have to take it to your board, but I can't imagine.
I don't, we have to...
Thank you.
I mean, it's going to be brought to her and to the board anyways.
Exactly. That's fine. So the motion would just be for the mayor, to allow the mayor to execute it. And then it would be presented to the DDA.
And can you just word the, word the motion as you want it worded and how?
Yeah.
It's just going to say the initial term of this agreement will begin on the effective date of this agreement and end September 30th, 2024. The agreement will automatically renew for two additional five years unless either party provides the right notice. So the termination would not affect the initial... I have to figure out how to write it. But I know what you want to do.
Right. I'm making a motion to, or hopefully there's a consensus, to remove the 180-day out.
From the initial, maybe the initial term of the agreement.
From the initial ending in September 30th, 2024.
Want to speak, Laura?